The council will now be in session. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Conaway.
Here.
Evancho. Loughman.
Here.
Leonard.
Here.
Marlin.
Here.
McMillan.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
Mr. Loughman.
Motion to excuse Councilman Evancho.
Ms. McMillan.
Second the motion.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is granted. Reading of the minutes, Mr. Marlin.
I make a motion we dispense with the reading of the minutes and place on file.
Mr. Wolverton.
I second the motion.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is granted. Mayor's report.
I was just looking at the little one studying all this and then realized I was sleeping, so what else can I do? We've got a lot going on tonight, council, a lot going on. First and foremost, I know all of you know you can feel the momentum in the street and the fact that here comes Boomerama. I just thought I'd set the tone on that. But anyhow, number one on your paper, and of course, most of your papers, oh yeah, request to amend the commercial lease agreement between Cambridge City Schools and us. That's on your paper. Now, here's where we take off and it's really...
We do that, Mayor. Let me just say that'll go to the Finance Committee.
Thank council president for straightening me up because I need that plenty. Cambridge Glass came and went over the weekend. We had a lot of visitors in town and I really did get invited out there for dinner and at first I thought, well, I don't have that many people out there, but I went out and it was really well attended. And everybody from all these places around the country, it's incredible what they do out there. And of course, the dance came and went out the big pavilion. I think we got some people here that was pretty active in that. And thankfully, they got through it without too tornado or anything too crazy out there. Again, I mentioned 4th of July is coming up next week. I had a department head meeting this morning. Anything that moves or cut grass or get this town cleaned up, we're into it. But at the same time, as the week progresses, if you see something exceed the length sticking out somewhere waving at you, don't hesitate to give us a call. Again, we're taking donations at the city park. We appreciate all the media sources and I'll be on the radio Wednesday morning. And we've got a really nice surprise this year. One little addition change, we're gonna have bounce houses for the little tikes up on Diamond One and add that to Jurassic and some other things. And then we're gonna play music throughout the park on the radio system with their help. And then, of course, we've got the Cambridge City Band. We'll have the fire department there and glow necklaces and all the family activities and the vendors will be there. We've got a couple really neat new ones this year along with the veterans, so we're excited about that. This one here I'm not excited about, but I'd be amiss if I didn't bring it up. I'm gonna need council's help as long as everybody else in this room. If you didn't already know it by reading your mail, tomorrow's D-Day when it comes to TV cable. They're supposed to go all digital, so if you're watching a tube and it goes out, they're gonna pick up the phone and call their local Cambridge City offices. I'm not looking forward to it. We've already been through this for about the last eight months. But as you all know, everyone ignores everything until it directly affects them. Well, as of tomorrow, we're supposed to find out. In the Ohr household, we're gonna let her go black for a little while, so we'll see how it works out. Probably not very good. I don't know if I can eat that many chicken wings, watch TV, be dubs or not. Law enforcement blitz over the weekend, and of course, we got most of them in here, so I really started thinking it was coming after me, but they really knocked it out of the woods. For those that didn't catch that, they didn't really announce it this time. The chief had admitted that that wasn't gonna be noticed this time as far as putting it out there. And in my paperwork here, I've got some more fine tuning class I can dig into later, but in theory, in 36 hours, we had 196 violator contacts. In other words, 196 individuals were flagged out of some of these stops. That's huge. And quite honestly, we want that known out there. We don't need all this activity around here, so if you've got some strange activities, take it someplace else or risk this chance. So I wanna praise the work done in our law enforcement agency there. We had Zanesville's help, State Patrol, everybody participated a little bit and we really do appreciate the extra work. I think we had a helicopter there for a little while, too. We swore in four more officers last Friday. I think some of you has heard or seen that. Again, Adam Castor, Don Gonbita, Gregory Johnson, Tyler Higgins was those four. And we had a really nice turnout. In fact, it was clear out in the hallway here, first time in the history of Cambridge that we know of that we said four sworn in at the same time. Add that to the already momentum we're gaining there and a really good wealth of new knowledge and learning and capability and just can't say enough about what I see going on there. And we gotta continue to lock our arms and make sure we do that. Property code area, I've asked for some specifics just to keep you on board because again, this is almost the halfway point. Residents are reminded to mowing ordinance states anything over eight inches. I can take you out there and show you a lot of those. To date, we have mowed 254 times. The city's forced to mow a property, the owner is charged $150. And again, we're not talking to anybody about that, we're just rolling. If it happens, we go. And quite honestly, with the rain and the different things, it's been a real strain this year. Even our city offices, we've been like, I know we're on South Gate right now picking up trash, weed whacking into the guardrails, really working hard to get everything tuned up for this big holiday. Estimates have been obtained of demolition. You guys granted the mayor and our group $25,000. Council recently appropriated. The first two properties will be demolished at 318 North Fifth. And that's the fire damaged one and the next one will be 425th North Seventh. I don't really want you to drive down and look at the Seventh, you'll realize how bad things can be. That might be the worst one I've seen in a long, long time and we've been battling that with everyone known to man for over eight years. So I do wanna thank you. We do have up to possibly four. We'll be able to get down through that, we're gonna be about $3,000 short, which we got some ideas. You'll get that information ongoing. The spring cleanup, 100 tons of trash was taken out of town, one full tire trailer. We collected $436 from tires and $3,302 from scrap. So I'd say 35 dumpsters were filled and removed. I'd hate to see what that would look like if we did skip one year. So several from the land bank are also gonna be removed. We have two on the south side. I don't have the addresses in front of me, but as soon as we have our land bank meeting this week, I'll be more bold and put that out there. But I think you remember some storylines where an individual might have passed away and that family gave us that home. That'll be took down and there's one on Grand Avenue. So that's gonna happen. Project update, City of Cambridge has several going on and I'm really getting kinda questioned at different times because they do get mixed up. And maybe you guys get the same thing, so I'm gonna go down a real quick list. Red carpet list station and forced main replacement. This project includes replacement of a sanitary sewer. Masser Smith Construction was awarded the project for $126,390. The project will be operational by the end of this week. In order to reduce the project cost, the sewer collection crew has been standing by and installing pumps, doing the pipe work and the vaults in the house. That's really a lot better than we thought it would. You know, that works. Brown's Heights Waterline Replacement. The project includes replacement approximately 13,000 feet of water lines located in the Brown's Heights subdivision. Stonegate Construction was awarded in 2017 in October. Started construction March 2018. As of today, all existing customers have been changed over to the new water lines. The contractor still has to finish all restoration work. In other words, remove the rocks from the ones that get worked up when they're mowed. We're working on that. The contract price for the project was $1.2 million. And honestly, that group up there was awesome. I mean, at times they had four crews working, they had a red, white, had a couple lights up and kinda aggravated people in the morning shift, but overall, pull that off is timely. Man, that's been good. The TTHM removal project, which has amazed me from the time I've heard it. The project includes the sign installation of the TTHM removal equipment at the Cambridge Water Treatment Clearwell. Utility Service Group will be installing power vents, you might have seen that in some of our news related from last week. Mixing equipment and surface aerators to reduce the TTHMs by 50%. That also affects who we sell water to. The contractor has been on site and the equipment will be operational by the end of July. This work will cost the city $1.6 million. Dewey Avenue Enhancement Project and Bridge Project. This project, the Dewey Avenue, I get this one all the time, when's it gonna start? When's it gonna start? Which includes rehabilitation work and enhancement work. The proposed bridge work includes installation of a deck... You didn't hear that. Deck overlay and replacement... I'm hearing you back here. The lighting projects and repairing sidewalks. The enhancement work consists of curb and sidewalk replacement. And the new decorative arch along Dewey Avenue from which Jefferson Avenue. Completion, general contract, was awarded the contract with $1.7 million. Last week, ODOT will be managing this project. In other words, they're doing all the lead on you might see normally around here and they'll be telling us when it'll start, but they say they're doing it this year. See a lot of weather going. 2018 Continuous Street, I know you've locked in on this, but again, Brenton Road, Oakland Boulevard to Highland, North Seventh, Brookside Avenue, Steubenville Avenue, Hallbar Drive, Creston Road, Grandview Road, Jack, don't do any flips up there. Creston Road, Highland Avenue and Hallbar, Avon Drive, Hallbar and Grant... I'm gonna have to change somebody, no. Nolton Drive, Avon, Hallbar Drive and Greenwood, Creston Road and North 19th. The city will be opening bids on June 28th, 2018 for this project with a November 2nd, 2018 completion date. State Route 209 Bridge Project, this bridge deck will be replaced with full closure of that bridge. ODOT will bid that out in 2019. Clark Street Reconstruction, 2020. The city will be placing a new water line along the corridor in the fourth quarter of this year. The water line project is in the design phase as we speak. Columbia Gas is on the move in the area right now on off blocks. And if you haven't been told, about two weeks ago, they were in here and they're gonna be real aggressive in the off streets. So we know they know what they're doing, they've done a good job in the past, but you'll see a lot of these different trucks running around and a lot of times, they think it's city stuff, but it's not. I do have more information on the police. Traffic stops, 105 total. Traffic arrests, 38. Warnings issued, 67. Felony drug arrest, 16. Drug arrests, 10. Warrant served, 14. FIs, 19. K-9 assisted, 15. And guns seized off the street, 3. I'm gonna pass these two sheets around to you guys and you can kinda glance at them. We've got a really special thing coming up. I'm probably gonna mess this up a little bit because we don't do this a lot here, but it's very important what we're getting ready to do because this really touched my heart and quite honestly, if you're an individual still alive today, it would not have been without the work of a lot of the people in this room. So I'm gonna have Mike Edwards from the Park Superintendent, please come up front and open things up and then we'll move into the little bit of a ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank council for being here. Thank our guests. And as he said, I'm here to talk about a great outcome to a really nasty situation, which that's the end of that you wanna be on. It doesn't happen very often and a lot of us are in a position to change a life now and then, but very few of us are in a position to actually save one. And there's people in this room that did that just out of the normal, everyday position of their jobs. Now, these uniform men behind me do a great job of that every day because that's what they're paid to do and trained to do, but there's things that happen with the course of a life and I'm glad to be a part of this one. June 14th, everybody's at the swimming pool, all the kids are playing, having a great time. Little four-year-old boy comes out of the bathroom and jumps in the water, thinking he's in two or three feet of water, he's actually in about four feet of water. Unless you're sitting there and you know what you're watching for, here's 400 and some thousand gallons of water, maybe 200 or 300 kids playing, having a great time, I would defy any of you to pick out the one that's struggling because they all look like they're playing, they're all face down, they're face up, they're under the water, over the water, throwing water in each other's faces. And thank goodness for preparation, training, knowledge, having a cool head, all these things that you think about and you prepare all this time. A lot of people say, well, I'll probably never use this. Thank goodness, we were in a position to have the right people in the right place at the right time. And by the end of the weekend, this little boy was sitting at home wiping Cheetos on the couch, yelling at his mom about cartoons and it could have been a lot different situation. These folks are not new to the pool. Carly Brunz has been a lifeguard for several years and JR Fox has been assistant manager since, what, 17, 18 years?
Has been that long.
20. But anyway, Carly was at her post, watching, as I said, watching these kids. Noticed one little young man floating face down. Now, they do that, they blow bubbles. And she kinda sat up in her chair and looked at him closer and there were no bubbles. Immediately goes in the water, brings this little boy to the side of the pool, which time he's as blue as your shirt. He is not breathing and his eyes are back like this and it was ugly. It really was. But again, preparedness, cool-headed thinking. JR Fox assisted her in getting that young man out of the pool. They immediately begin mouth-to-mouth resuscitation. As JR would tell you, there's no time to get out the manual and read what you're supposed to do. You can't look and see, well, what do I do next? There were some off-duty medical people that were on site also. They helped, but it doesn't change the fact, it's easier to tell how to do a good job than to do one. And Carly Brunz, JR Fox did their job that day. They didn't stand up and say, look what I did, boy, that's good. In fact, within 20 minutes after that young man being taken to the hospital by these guys, Carly was back in her chair. You can't teach that. It's just something that we pride ourselves in trying to pick out great young people. We pride ourselves in trying to put leadership in position to let them do the things they're trained to do without getting in their way. And that's just what happened. We have certificates of commendation here for both JR and Carly tonight and I just wanna thank council for giving us an opportunity to have a facility where they can do their job and that they can do what they did over that period, about 20 minutes. It all happened in a lot less time than I've been standing here talking. Sorry, Mayor. He thinks I get windy, so I'll quit right there, but I could talk all day about what they did because unless you're in that moment, everybody has a great story to tell and I'm just glad that this one turned out the way it did and we owe our gratitude and thanks to those two folks. That's all I have.
What I'd like to do is I'd like the chief of police to stand right there. Rocky, you right beside him, with you, Mike. You stand here and I'm gonna get these flags here. Thank you, Mike, so much. Also, in the process of this, I wasn't there, but my phone was ringing off the hook after the fact and these policemen that were involved here, too. So what my goal is, I'm gonna read a cover story on the lifeguard and a cover story on the policeman and I'm gonna read the names of who was involved here. And I'd like you, JR, Carly, come on up and then I want you to stand right here and be ready for this, so we're gonna get this done. Come stand right beside me here. Carly Brunz, for professional achievement and superior performance of her duties while serving as a lifeguard at Cambridge Parks Department. On about June 14th, 2008, on this date, lifeguard Brunz along with assistant pool manager JR Fox reacted to an emergency situation at the Cambridge City Pool located on North 10th Street. Lifeguard Brunz observed a four-year-old male in the pool, was not moving. She immediately jumped in and brought him to the edge of the pool where the assistant manager assisted by the off-duty medical personnel. And during that process, through their efforts, they were able to cause the child to begin breathing on his own. Yet it can be said that to very high degree of certainty that their actions saved this young child's life. Their quick response and ability to turn this emergency situation into a successful save. Lifeguard Brunz's exceptional professional ability and loyal dedication for the duty reflected great credit upon herself and we're in keeping with the highest traditions of the City of Cambridge Parks Department. I, Tom S. Dior, give you this award for what you did here today.
Thank you.
Give her a hand, please. Carly, just go up there front and just stand right over there, shake these guys' hands. There's no perfect answer for doing this, we're just doing it. JR Fox, we all know JR and we are very happy that you sign up every year to be around these kids that you do know so well, along with three or four people that aren't in this room, but they're probably out there doing their job right now. But JR is part of our community, his kids are raised here, a couple of them work out there. And even though I read that, run side by side, I think it's fair to say a partnership and leadership and all the things that went on that day and the good Lord was with us. And JR, thank you very much for the City of Cambridge. Now, I don't know what I don't know, but I know since I've been here, we've trained and worked hard and recruited and talked and we've got some special people in blue uniforms behind me. And they do do their job all the time. And very seldom do they ever get to come up here. We have our awards ceremony, went down to our police department. But on this particular moment, based on what went down and how it went down, there was a moment in time when hard decisions had to be made and we didn't have time for sometimes what the dog and pony shows we have to go through. And the people in here, working together, they made a decision and loaded that young man up with the proper situation, got him to the hospital. It kinda touched off a little soreness in a couple areas, but after thorough study of all the above, it was totally the right thing to do and that kid's here today for that reason. Again, officers, and I'm gonna read your name and I'd like you to go up and go ahead and shake these and get their hand. I'm gonna read one of these and then I'll hand you your certificates, is that okay? They haven't arrested me yet, I must be doing all right. Tim Ferguson, Chris Gebhardt, Fred Wagner and Devin Ryan. Again, all these gentlemen, shake your hand, just kinda get these guys and go up front there. Actually, all these, this is again, very special. I just happened to pick up top on top, Tim Ferguson, for the professional achievement of superior performance of their duties while serving as his duty, assuming, serving as lieutenant for the Cambridge Police Department. On June 14th, Lieutenant Ferguson along with Sergeant Fred Wagner, Sergeant Chris Gebhardt and K-9 Patrolman Devin Ryan responded to the medical emergency at the Cambridge City Pool located in North 10th. And the city of Cambridge, upon arrival, they found four-year-old male being resecuted... I'm gonna get that, I'll work on that.
Resuscitation.
Resuscitate, there we go. Come on Sharon, hit me in the head. By the pool staff and off-duty medical personnel. They assessed the situation with the child breathing, immediately transported the child to Southeastern Medical for further treatment. It can be said that with the reasonable degree of certainty that their actions saved this young child's life. Their quick response and ability to turn the medical response into a successful save. Lieutenant Ferguson's successful professional ability and loyal dedication to the duty reflected the great credit upon himself and we're in keeping with the highest tradition of the Cambridge City Police Department. I, Tom S. Dior, Mayor of the City, give you commendation. Again, Chris Gebhardt, Fred Wagner and Devin Ryan. And in their listing of their current rank, and I'll be giving those guys, give them a round of applause. Chief, you have anything?
The ladies have...
State Director Hill?
Aye, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody here wanna say a word?
These three ladies were the three ladies that stepped up to help me. Kate Lowery, Trisha Bennett, and I don't know if it's Dana, I don't remember their last name anymore. They were outstanding on just telling me that I was doing the right thing and just to keep going. Because in that situation, you know, I told Mike, I said, 15 years, I've probably taken CPR classes 15 different times in my career because of coaching and training, college and stuff. And never had to use it till that day. And you don't know if you're doing it right, wrong or indifferent, you're just praying that it'll work. And they just said, you do close as you can and it will cause them to be better for that. So I just asked, and people that don't know CPR, just get out there and do it because you never know and you gotta use it. So, you know, I was very thankful for those three young ladies for coming down and assisting. They didn't question it at all, they came down right away and just said, can we help? Learn nurses? And it was like, it made a big difference for myself, so I wanna make sure they get their notification also, too.
Yeah, give them a hand. Yeah, you know, Krista, for example, I know she's a skilled medical technician and things like that, but that young man was back out at the park, I think, two days later after a trip to Columbus, just double-checked some things. And, you know, that pool rolls, I mean, that place is busy out there and we take that serious. And again, everybody here and the many more that might be in the rotation on a different day, thank you, thank you very much. And that's all I have tonight, Council President.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And Carly.
And Carly. Any questions of the mayor this evening by anybody?
I can't talk to that.
Yeah, I've been in these council chambers a long time. Don't know that I've clapped that many times in one meeting, so thank you all. Good stuff.
Thank you, Counsel.
Communications.
I wanted to cry too, Mr. President. Having a two-year-old grandson, that kinda hits home, so thank you all for what you do. Request from our city auditor asking to appropriate $40 to the Russell Deal Trust and $40 to the Louis Craig Haynes Trust.
Mr. Loughman.
I should refer to Finance.
Mr. Conaway.
Second.
Yep. Everybody in favor... Sorry, I gotta kiss myself here. Everybody in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion's granted.
I have the monthly report from Municipal Court.
Mr. Marlin.
I make a motion we accept and place on file.
Mr. Leonard.
Second.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign and that motion's granted. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, we'll move to reports of committees.
Report of Finance Committee, June 16th. We recommend that the following transfers and appropriations be approved. Appropriate $835 to police miscellaneous.
Any questions of the committee on that report? Okay, move on to unfinished business. Seeing nothing, we'll go to the audience portion. If anybody in the audience would like to approach the microphone and speak, is there anybody here? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Anything on the new business? We'll go to ordinances and resolutions.
A resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors of the question of levying a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation, and this is the 3.9 mils. Second step, if you'll remember, at the last council meeting, I reminded you that we had to do this in two steps. This is the second step for the fire levy to be on the November ballot.
Mr. Marlin.
I make a motion we suspend.
Mr. Wolverton.
I second that motion.
Roll call on the suspension.
Conaway.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Loughman.
Yes.
Marlin.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Ms. McMillan.
Motion to pass.
Mr. Conaway.
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Marlin.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Conaway.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Loughman.
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted. Next, please.
A resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors of the question of levying a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation, and this is the 3.9 mils.
Mr. Conaway.
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Loughman.
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Loughman.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Conaway.
Yes.
Marlin.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Loughman.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Conaway.
Yes.
Marlin.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted. Next, please.
An ordinance of transfers and appropriations.
Mr. Marlin.
Motion to suspend.
Mr. McMillan.
Second.
Roll call on the suspension.
Loughman.
Yes.
Conaway.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Marlin.
Yes.
Mr. Loughman.
Motion to pass.
Mr. Conaway.
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Conaway.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Loughman.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Marlin.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted. Okay, we'll move on to miscellaneous. Mr. Loughman.
Finance committee will meet next Monday at 4:30 PM. Here in council chambers.
No other committees, right? Ms. Clerk.
Yes, I just wanted to add some fluff, some more feel-good stuff at our meeting tonight. I'm sure a lot of you heard my husband reporting this, maybe saw it in the newspaper, but Cambridge is now the home to the 2018 Miss Ohio. I had the privilege of traveling to Mansfield last weekend to attend the Miss Ohio Scholarship Program, and Maddie Lynn Christman, who is a 2014 Cambridge High School graduate, competed against 22 other ladies, and she won as Miss Ohio and will be representing the state of Ohio at the Miss America competition in September. And I just think that is pretty darn cool that Cambridge, Ohio, has Miss Ohio, who grew up here in Cambridge, graduated from Cambridge High School, and is a graduate from Kent State, and is going on to represent not just Ohio but Cambridge and Atlantic City in September.